Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the York City Planning Commission to order. May we have a roll call?
Johnson.
Here.
Velez.
Here.
Burgos.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Gaines is excused and Wolf is excused.
It's noted we have a quorum.
We do. And just, I wanted to let everybody know, please speak into the microphone, turn off your cellphones. If you have them on, speak into that microphone because it is being recorded on YouTube. And just to make a quick announcement on the agenda order. If you'll see on the agenda that the Land Development Subdivision 462 to 464 West Market is the first one, being that they also are on as a zoning case, we're gonna do that first, Land Development, and then we're gonna do the zoning case right behind that. And then we'll jump back to the City Council, the zoning ordinance amendment, and then the other two zoning cases. Sorry, go ahead.
Minutes from the previous meeting, has everybody had a chance to review them? Are there any changes? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept in minutes.
We have a motion, second, any further discussion?
We seconded it?
I did.
Okay, cool.
Roll call, please.
All right. Johnson.
Aye.
Velez.
Aye.
Burgos.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Moore.
Motion passes. Committee reports, does everyone have a chance to review their zoning hearing board? Any unfinished business? Okay, under new business, Land Development Subdivision Plan 711. First we'll hear from staff and then we'll ask the applicant to step forward.
Okay. So, the address is 462 to 464 West Market Street. The name of the project is Doctors Row 462 LLC. They are requesting a land development waiver and cross off there because I'm gonna have to put the correct address on there for the 462 to 464 at this location. So, staff recommends the waiver approval contingent upon zoning approval, and the zoning case will be heard directly after this, after the land development waiver request, and then they will go to zoning on Thursday.
All right, good evening, everybody. My name is Dave Jimm, I'm from Saci, I'm from New York. I'm here representing Doctors Row 462 LLC. Let's just give you a quick idea of what the project is about. You're here this evening with the Department of the Department of Dr. Rowe Apartment Project, involving a building located at 462, 464 West Market Street. The property is located in the UN2 zoning district and involves rehabilitation of an existing three-story building to create 15 ADA accessible parking units for seniors, including eight efficiency apartments and seven one-bedroom, one-bedroom apartments. This will create affordable housing for seniors, will also include an office, a community room, and commentary, a living kitchen, two bathrooms, an elevator, and outdoor patio, eight U off-street parking spaces at street level under the building, one full hot meal per day, enhanced medical and nutrition services, real healthcare checkups and exercises, wellness programs. You can judge it with all speed. I'm gonna ask Joe Burry from First Capital Engineering to come up and talk to you about the Land Development project.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Joe Burry, First Capital Engineering. In addition to what Mr. Jimm has talked about, we were at the City of York staff in July to discuss this project as a whole. Part of that was how to process this through land development. During that discussion, it was suggested a waiver of land development be requested as part of the zoning application. As we talked about, the project is at 462, 464 West Market Street. I won't go back over the number of units. It's in the UN2. The property is 0.171 acres in size. If you can, if you look at the, excuse me, one second. The existing conditions plan, which depicts the property, you'll notice, and maybe you're familiar with the site, the building takes up the entirety of the property, 100% impervious coverage. There's no building expansions proposed, no earth resurgence proposed. It's served currently by latherals for sewer and water, so naturally, no access or driveways proposed. So, as all of those things combined, it basically provides justification for a waiver of land development because the building will not get larger. So, we're at, we're here tonight, obviously, asking for a recommendation. The council, hopefully, the 21st at their meeting, they can, we can vote on it. So, we're asking for a favorable recommendation of the waiver of land development from the Planning Commission to the City Council. If you have any questions with, about that, we'd be more than happy to answer.
So, in addition, we have application for special exception and an application for four variances going along with that. The special exception request is for multi, multifamily dwelling as a conversion from a different use. We filed that under Section 1304.01-1.02.002. We've also filed in conjunction with that an application for variances. First one from maximum total impervious surface and the minimum open space requirements under Section 1303.2 and the table set forth therein. We believe this is actually a nonconforming existing condition because this building currently occupies the entire site. There is no open space in this property right now, it's entirely impervious surface. I would note that this property has been owned by the RDA for about 12 years, I think, or 13 years, and it is, it's completely uninhabitable. It is a total, basically, rehab of the project. But to the extent that it's not considered a nonconforming use, it would be cost prohibitive to demolish the entire building in order to meet the impervious surface moving space regulations. The number of units per acre is a second request. It's limited by Section 1303.12, Section 1.02.002, point B. It requires no more than 24 units per acre. This lot is actually 0.171 acres, or 7,449 square feet. It's a very tiny lot. If you do the math, the proposed, the proposed number of spaces, or no, I'm sorry, number of spaces, density would be 87.72 units per acre. However, we're only projecting 15 units or requesting 15. Keeping in mind that this project is intended to meet the all-important goal of providing four acres senior living units, the density calculation does not seem to fit, particularly given the fact that the project will otherwise rehabilitate currently unused and uninhabited building. And the proposed number of units is also reasonable for the proposed use in this location. The third requi, the third request for variance in a parking requirement with Section 1303.12 under Section 1.02.002, which requires 125 off-street parking spaces for a dwelling unit. This should require 23 off-street parking spaces. Again, given the existing building currently occupies the entire 0.171 acres, the cost to demolish the entire building simply to meet the requirements for off-street parking seems to be impossible. Where there's currently no off-street parking spaces on the current property, the project would create eight U off-street parking spaces along West Market Street. And that would be limited to staff, residents, and delivery only. The zoning ordinance also requires that off-street parking spaces be denied by 18 or 90-degree or heading parking spaces. That's 162 square feet per space. The required 23 parking spaces would require 3,726 square feet. There's approximately half the lots on it, just for parking. So, again, this lot is only 7,449 square feet and 23 parking spaces, which again, seem excessive in certain states. The dimensions of the stalls and aisles as required under Section 1309.03D. Parking would require, under, under the heading spaces, require aisle width of 22 feet for two-way traffic. To add 18 feet for parking spaces for length, and then have 22 feet on top of that, that is 41 feet. I think that's what I asked for, 41 feet, uh, 40 feet. The lot width is only 31 feet, feet width. So, as such, it'd be, it'd be impossible to meet the, go through the requirements for parking space and aisle width. So, we're asking for a variance of 13 feet on the aisles. Joe, is there anything you wanted to add on that?
The only thing, the only thing I would add, you mentioned access to existing parking spaces. They'll be off of Mason, not off of, I think you missed that, that's all. And the interior width of the building is 31, so the, the overall width of the property is 33.57. So, the inside of the building walls is 31, and that kinda goes towards asking for the variance of the 22-foot aisle. We're providing the 18-foot depth stall, but 13-foot aisle. Again, it's a private off-street parking that's gonna be secured with a gate and a key, keyless or a phone entrance of some sort. That's it.
Maybe I have one of the developers' representatives talk real about the project itself, so I can do a little.
So, board members, let me know when you feel it's, it's appropriate for me to read the variance review, the special exception variance review, as to what he just said.
Could you let her go first?
Okay, if, so, it's a special exception slash variance review. So, the zoning part of this case is 28-2025-Z-S-E-V 462 to 464 West Market Street. The applicant is RB, Dr. Rowe 462 LLC. The owner is the redevelopment authority of the City of York. It is in a UN2 urban residential neighborhood district. Applicant would like to convert a commercial building into a multifamily affordable housing for seniors with 15 units. Variance appeal number one, the applicant seeks a variance for dimensional variance for multifamily conversion from a different use found in Section 1304.01-1 dot O2 dot 002 to convert an existing slash vacant building to a multifamily affordable housing for seniors with eight efficiency and seven one-bedroom apartments for the property at 462 to 464 West Market Street in the UN2 zoning district. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the definitional variance for multifamily conversion from a different use found in Section 1304.01-1 dot O2 dot 002. Variance appeal number two, the applicant seeks a variance for a maximum total impervious found in Section 1303 dot 12D to convert an existing slash vacant building to a multifamily affordable housing for seniors with eight efficiency and seven one-bedroom apartments for the property at 462 to 464 West Market Street in the UN2 zoning district. Therefore, staff recommends denial of a variance for a maximum total impervious found in Section 1303 dot 12D for the property at 462 to 464 West Market Street. Variance three, the applicant seeks a variance maximum total minimum open space found in Section 1303 dot 12D to convert an existing vacant building to a multifamily affordable housing for seniors with eight efficiency and seven one-bedroom apartments for the property of 462 to 464 West Market Street in the UN2 zoning district. Therefore, staff recommends denial of a variance maximum total minimum open space found in Section 1303 dot 12D to convert an existing slash vacant building to a multifamily affordable housing for seniors. Variance appeal number four, the applicant seeks a variance for off-street parking and width of parking stalls and aisles found in Section 1309 dot O3D to convert an existing vacant building to a multiple, multiple, multifamily affordable housing for seniors with eight efficiency and seven one-bedroom apartments for the property of 462 to 464 West Market Street in the UN2 zoning district. Therefore, staff recommends denial of a variance for off-street parking and width of parking stalls and aisles found in Section 1309 dot O3D for the property of 462 to 464 West Market Street in the UN2 zoning district. Special, special exception for the use. The applicant seeks a special exception to allow multifamily use as defined in Section 1304.01-1 dot O2 dot 002 for the property of 462 to 464 West Market Street in the UN2 zoning district. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the special exception to allow the multiple, multiple family, multiple family use pending all other variances are approved for the property of 462 to 464 West Market Street. So, just slash through that, make it the multiple, multiple use, please.
I'm sorry, can we clarify? I think you said you, the staff recommends denial of all the variances, or is that?
Correct, correct. So, they do not, they don't, you're asking for a variance, so a variance doesn't meet our ordinance. So, we recommend denial of all the variances, recommend approval of a special exception pending all the variances are. Right, other than that it doesn't meet our ordinance.
So, yeah, again, this, as we stated earlier, this is an existing condition on an existing lot. The building, the building fills the entire spot today. And in order to make a reasonable rehabilitative use of this, which is, I believe, what the zoning ordinance envisions and requires, it makes it very difficult to meet all the requirements as if this were a new build. Other than scraping this entire lot and taking it down to ground zero and starting again, it makes it very cost prohibitive to undertake projects of this sort. And the intent really is to provide, A, rehabilitation to this property, and B, to provide for affordable senior housing in, which is a much-needed goal that we have in York City. Okay, if you had any questions, I can bring Ryan up from the developer to talk a little about the programming of the project.
Good evening, we appreciate the opportunity to stand before you with our team partners, the Hunter Group, DFW Group. My name is Ryan Sanders, I'm from RP Development, local contractor, developer, builder. We were approached by the city, say, about three and a half years ago in regards to this blighted property. We've been able to work with our partners from the federal level, county level, and the state as well, along with the municipality here to be able to raise enough funds to get this project off of the ground. We're just asking you here for your support to be able to bring all 15 needed units of affordable housing. We've found letters of support from all different levels of government and also from the Veterans Administration, just based on the current need of what's available there. All 15 of these units will be affordable, they also will be accessible, which is very important to us as we look to help our friends that may be disabled. We're just very excited to be able to stand before you again, after three years of hard, detailed work to be able to get this project off of the ground. This project has been blighted, as Ms. Davis has stated, for a number of years. And again, we've expended a lot of resources to be able to bring this to fruition. So, again, we appreciate the support as we try to.
A question for you, Mr. Sanders. I see that there was an amendment to your contract back in August to extend the time period. Are you, have you guys started any work on the property?
We have not started to work on the property at all, because it's going through the process to see if we can build one more. You know, move the property to do that all at once.
And the December 31st next year timeline, you think you could fit?
Yes.
Could you give me a little more information on what?
There will be a number of, on the back end, I think there's a large garage that will need to be demolished and also be shored up as well. Currently, right now, the, the building is, doesn't have too much inside of it right now. Like I said, there's some damage to the exterior which we'll have to get rid of, along with the second floor over there. But we look to take out as much as we can take out and shore up where we want. This is for seniors in general though, but we have talked to the Veterans Administration because they do have folks that are, you know, within seniors that would like to be housed at this location. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we'll have a working elevator, community room area for counseling or if they need to be seen briefly, with a warming kitchen, along with outdoor space as well. Not at this time, we just, you know, wanted to make it open and available, but, you know, there are different funding sources that we have applied for that may give us an opportunity to dedicate those specifically to the veterans. But as of right now, we're just taking all comers. Um, not necessarily, no. Uh, PHFA. Oh, yeah, for sure, for sure.
So, the for seniors is just because that is what they are developing for the seniors. The use will be multifamily, so if they were to sell it, they can sell it as multifamily for the amount of units. Anybody that would purchase it, if, let's say they wanna do 25 or they wanted to do some more than what they have in there, they would have to come back to zoning them. But that, we are just letting them know that it is specific, right now, their project.
Yeah, but that's entirely not binding, like, so like you're saying, we could approve this, and I'm not saying you're gonna do this, but we still can, we're a planning commission, if we plan that two years down the road, when they're finished it, they could just sell it to someone and they could be like, I'm gonna do college kids, and it could be filled with 15, you know, apartments of college kids. Is that correct? And they would not have to come before us again because we have already approved it.
And I believe a part of our financing package through the city, we were very specific about who we were servicing and serving. And then therefore, we don't look to change the use of that.
Yes, I get that 100%.
I, I understand what Mr. Davis is saying, because we've had issues with, say, rooming houses also, if they sell it, you know, to, if they have to go back to. But because you are going for a multifamily use, it's pretty general, you know, for multifamily, it's, you know, could be, could mean anything. In your case, you're just keeping it seniors, but, I mean, you can put that stipulation on your recommendation if you would like to. I don't know, I'm not real sure, because we've never had anybody for a multifamily. You know, if it's a, if it were a rooming house, we make the recommendation that if they sell it, they change it back to single-family, what it originally was. In this case, it was a commercial building, and the use that they're going for is multifamily.
Do we not have a zoning ordinance that specifically addresses senior housing or any?
No.
Well, I would suggest we could not because of the Fair Housing Act, you couldn't, you couldn't target for somebody. But if, considering, if your recommendation, you'd like that to be a condition that remain for senior housing, I think that my father, the most definitely appreciate that and accept that. The other thing is, is it's gonna be based on our application. So, the application, the set of the facts that are set forth in the application, we'd be stuck with that. But again, if you'd like to put in your recommendation, a condition that it be, it may, it be stuck with, not stuck, but kept with senior housing, then that would give the zoning office the opportunity, if it changes hands and it's gonna come out as senior housing, that they could enforce the zoning decision that was made and require them to go back to that.
Very good question, I'm looking right now, I don't, I mean, because the, the previous use, I get, I know what he's asking because we've been down this road a million times. So, but the previous use, the last previous use was a commercial. However, it is a vacant, and it hasn't been that used for a year, so it's an abandoned use. So, they are going for a totally new use. So, the only thing that I would feel comfortable with is you putting a condition on it if they sold it to sell, to make sure that it stays senior living there always. Because technically, it's not going back to anything, they are doing multifamily use.
And stipulating something like that is something we're able to do, and it would trigger a process in zoning when it's sold, to be like, well, it's matured senior.
Correct, yes, it would be, yes, it would be, well, I mean, that would be, it would be on the stenographers, it would be in the record as that, to be put on as, you know, that, well, it's the same thing. Well, I guess with the rooming houses, because rooming houses aren't, they're a single family. So, I mean, I can look into that for you, if you like, I can ask Andy, also.
Well, I don't wanna delay this one, I just wanna put something on it that will trigger it in the same kind.
And I would, I would like for you to go ahead and do that, and if the applicant is okay with that, then we can do that. And as it goes on Thursday, before it goes, I'll, I'll make the call and also note that in your approval contingent upon.
I'll give you more of that because it is accessible and it does have an elevator. It can also serve as disabled, not just seniors.
I have a, I have a concern about trying to just stipulate senior housing with federal housing act. I don't know that we can do that. Well, I think if we accept it, you could. I don't, I don't believe you could say it could only be seniors. And then we say, well, we don't agree with that, I think it'd be okay if we accepted the commission. Here's the other thing, arguably, if it stops being used, because we're asking for density calculate, a density variance, right?
That's gonna go back to how many people can live there. So, if the variance is stipulated, if, if the condition is based upon senior or disabled folks, and if that stops being used that way, then it would default back to the number of units that's permitted under the UN2 zoning district. Were any other uses permitted in the zoning district? Conceivably, if someone wanted to change that back to commercial and it's allowed in that zoning district, it could be, right? There's nothing in the zoning ordinance to keep it from being so. So, really, the only, the request here is based on the density calculation on the number of units as opposed to use. The other things are parking and such are really, I mean, you're, you're putting stipulations on, but really, the use itself on the special exception is where you can put that reasonable condition in place that you accept.
Yeah, just to get the use changed, because, yeah, if they get the variances for the parking stalls and all of that, then, yes, just for the use.
Yes, and again, I don't believe my. Shoot, that sort of. Well, they're, how big are they? I'm not exactly. It's, it's 87.72 units per acre, but you, you mean how many people can live there? They're one-bedroom apartments, and the efficiencies are. They're one-bedroom apartments, and the efficiencies are one-bedroom, correct?
Well, there are seven one-bedroom, eight efficiency, so 15 total units.
How many people can live there?
15.
15.
15.
Now, when you do the math for density, that's 87 units per acre. As it is, based on the current ordinance, you're only put four units in. How the calculation works.
Some of the seniors can also have.
Right. Well, you could have a couple, you could have a couple that slept in the same bed.
One-bedroom, oh, I don't, I don't know.
No, I, 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 I think that's, I, no, I think that's your question, I, yeah, I, I think conceivably. Conceivably, there could be up to two people per apartment, because there could be couples who sleep in the same bed, so. Conceivably.
30 people can live in this location, but again, they're very small apartments, it's 12,000 square feet divided over 15 units, so, you do the math, it's fairly small, not a lot.
So, Mr. Davis, we're putting the, the condition on the special exception use and not on anything that has to do with the land development waiver? Because they're not actually developing it, okay. So I think the first one would be the land development waiver, and then we'll go down to the zoning, each of the zoning.
Hi, good evening, my name's Kelly Adams, my wife Carol and I live at 458 West Market Street. So this, uh, this project is, is very important to us because it's two doors from our home. Any plan to improve and, uh, re-qualify that property is certainly welcome to any of us in that neighborhood. It is a bladed property, it is an eyesore, it is dangerous, and we congratulate the developers who are willing to take this on. However, anyone who's tried to park on West Market Street in the 400 block. That neighborhood understands that there is no available parking on West Market Street many times during the week. And to add to the excess overflow from this project, plus they mentioned staff, and again, parking not only for residents, but for staff and other individuals. It's, uh, not, it, 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 it's just not feasible for the residents of the neighborhood. There are numerous vacant open spaces on, on Mason Alley. And in fact, this one that you have, 476, which is also in our block, uh, has a large open area in back of the property itself. Perhaps there are arrangements that could be made in which they can tie in their parking to the available parking on the alley. And not overextend the parking for the current residents. Another question is that there is even, you know, there's nothing inside, they say, there is gonna have to be some, um, construction. And so they're either gonna have to tear it to the front of the building or the back of the building in order to, uh, uh, do the construction. And I'm concerned that, uh, again, for the neighbors, uh, the, the folks directly on either side, this could present a serious issue. They don't know if they mentioned whether the, uh, the walls on the sides, the long walls that run from Market Street to the alley, uh, whether they will remain intact. I think probably they will have to, but, uh, you know, everything within those walls is gonna have to be built from the ground up and require a lot of equipment, and require a lot of work. And, uh, they're gonna have to get inside the building in order to do that. We haven't heard anything about what they plan to do to the neighbors, uh, on either side to, uh, protect them from this work. Or, um, you know, they haven't, I, I got a flyer on my front door a couple of days ago, no one has come around from the developers to discuss it with us, to share the diagrams with us. We got a nice, pretty picture of what it might look like. Assume they're gonna keep, because of the historic nature of the neighborhood, they will have to keep the facade either as it is, or they will have to rebuild it as it is. And again, I'm not sure I see any, uh, any information on that. I think there are a lot of questions, we still need to be answered, your question, you know, I don't want a building for college kids two doors down from my home. And if that's a possibility, then that's not a good sign. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to address his concerns?
Sure. Uh, let's start with the second, second part first. One, we're working with SAA Architects, they submitted a building permit, demolition permit, and a power review letter. These are separate and apart from the zoning requirement, but I will tell you that the proposal is to do demolition in stages so that they can shore up as they go, as opposed to doing anything presenting a danger to neighboring properties. He is correct that we are not touching the sides, there are the neighbor, the existing, uh, neighboring properties, those, those walls shouldn't be kept intact. So in addition, that's not a part of zoning, that is a part of the building permit process, the demolition process, and we do have a registered architect firm here in Newark who's working on that, working on that closely. Unfortunately, in these circumstances in, in the city, um, as we know, if you do any work on one property, you are gonna affect your neighbors in some way, shape, or form, and you can just do the best you can to get that rehabilitated. Otherwise, it may sit bladed for number 12 over 25 years. Uh, with regard to the parking, met, because these are ADA, uh, ADA accessible properties, many of the folks are not able to drive, which is why we're making, we're making, um, stip, we're, we're getting people involved to provide for, uh, transportation to and from the site. There is no full-time staff on site, they will come to do the warmest checkups and such, they'll various times during the day, they will, they will then leave, and they will park under the, under the property, uh, under the apartment service suite, getting back and forth. So, we believe the eight spaces should be sufficient at most any time to provide for the parking used at this property.
Thank you. Any other comments?
My name is Lee Zuckerman, I live at 466 West Market. I've been there for 41 years, I've been next to this property, I've joined in the property for 41 years. This may be the, a 10th time a proposal for this property has come forward. Started with Wellspan, when they bought Workline Molding, they were moving the whole buildings into their offices, so forth and so on. Events will be somebody else, and the city closed them down. And the last one who came in was, uh, Yon Properties, that was back in 2016, uh, we went through the planning, zoning, we got to some kind of agreement, they were gonna put in 12, and the problem was parking, no parking. And then they finally agreed to eight to 10, and it just didn't, the whole thing fell through. A few minutes ago, this gentleman mentioned that with the square footage, the only possibility would best be four units. My recommendation was, um, the city came to me and speeded by it. My only conclusion was I could, um, possibly come up with four condos with parking. So the whole issue is this, the building's falling down, I wish somebody could do something about it, but there was no parking. There's a limited amount of space in the building, you can't put 15 to 30 people in there and not have the right kind of parking for the resistance, or, uh, uh, oh. If they're having meals brought in, they're just, just not there. You gotta cause, but there was no parking on West Mason Avenue. It's, uh, West Mason Avenue, that whole block, no parking at any time, there are signs stating up there, please come by all the time, tow cars away, so forth and so on, because of the school, new hook was back there. Garbage, they haven't addressed what they're gonna do with the garbage. There's no, no place to put dumpsters or anything like that. When there's snow, all the snow is piled up onto the south side of West Mason, uh, West Market Street. So you're limiting parking space on West Market because of the snow, we've been snow plowing, there's no place to put garbage. People end up putting the garbage on the sidewalk, that's if they shovel it, and then it gets blown off, here's, that, that's a, a huge problem. They, they just mentioned demolition to the property. Okay, that doesn't work. Um, they were saying they aren't gonna demolition the property, but he just said the real demolition. You're gonna have up to 30 people in there? I, I don't see, I think that's a safety issue. Uh, there's a runoff problem that they haven't addressed, because it's flat roofs, I don't see where all the runoff's going. Now, it's just going inside the building and deteriorating the building further. He just mentioned that they aren't gonna do any work to the, uh, the side walls, uh, they're collapsing. So there's not to be worked onto all the walls, all the roofing, it's just not feasible. And, uh, uh, your own John probably won't kind of email.
Yes. You're John? No. Oh, my boss told me to tell you. Yeah, yeah, I'm, we're the civil, I'm not the architect. Okay.
We went into that property, and it was, we came up with a conclusion, said to include maybe four condos, in fact, with parking. And that's the only way this property is gonna be addressed and put in, made viable. Just as you said, if you wanna, you know, two years down the road, they start putting people in there and they decide to sell it, and, oh, look, put some college kids in there. That doesn't work either, so, I think you should seriously, seriously look at this, and instead of jumping to the gun and, uh, coming up with a conclusion, you should give deeper and deeper thought to this before it goes any further. And if you have any questions for me about the problem, no problem, I've got a picture of 41 years of that problem, so, I thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can you step forward?
My name is Kenny Calendis-Lindsey, and I live on 444 West Market Street. My only question. 444 West Market Street, Kenny Calendis. Um, my only question is, how would this affect our taxes as homeowners as well?
I don't really have an answer for that, um, the property will be taxed for you, use as, you know, as they're proposing, so it shouldn't affect your direct taxes.
Okay, so the amount of the, um, the cost of the project will not affect like, tax, like taxes, like if it's a million, $2 million project, it won't affect, you know, our taxes, like, would it raise our taxes, is my question.
I don't have a technical answer for you, but it should not have an effect for your, your taxes are based on your property, not on theirs.
I, I can address that question a little bit. Part of the issue with the city is you have so, we have so many dilapidated properties, they're paying zero taxes, there's so many government offices, they're paying zero real estate taxes, and we have so many, uh, so many charitable organizations in the city, they're focused on here because this is the city government recounting. To the extent that you can build and add taxable properties back or tax rules, it should only help the tax situation on others because you're increasing the tax base. So I, I, and, you know, Mr. Zuckerman, if you have $4 million to throw at this project, you should do that, because that, that's what's gonna cost a rehabilitation, so, well, five, I'm sorry, five.
I've got six.
Okay, well, you can have it.
You have 41 years to make a call.
Yeah, so, so I guess, I guess in that perspective, and, and to address the gentleman's conversation about no one came around, unfortunately, you were court that day probably when they came around, but there were, there were three folks from the developers group that did knock on every door in the area, and that's why they left the car. You probably, you probably ended up in court that day, so, so we, we are making our effort, I understand that it's not gonna be perfect, and no infill project or rehab project in the city areas. Show me where there isn't a parking problem in downtown North City, please. Please show me where that's at with off-street parking, where it's plentiful and no one has a problem finding this spot on the street. I would love to know where that's at, because it's not there. I work in the city also, I am familiar with, with Market Street, Philadelphia, you can't find parking space, I don't care what you, what you do, if you put four comedy minutes in, you're still gonna have as much parking issue. Because there's not four more spots on that street, or six. And everyone has, anyone who has a wife or kids, you have two or three parks, right? You don't want three. So I, I, I understand the concern, my folks are trying to do everything they can to address this in a responsible fashion, rehabilitate this property, and bring some economic development back to this area of the city to help stabilize real estate taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing under, we have a motion, uh, land development waiver. I make a motion to recommend approval of a land development waiver for the property at 462 to 464 West Market Street.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Hearing on roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Velez. Burgos. Davis.
Aye.
Moore.
Motion carries. Do we have a motion for the variance for multifamily conversion? I need a motion to recommend approval of a dimension of variance for multifamily conversion from a different use found in section 1304 dot 01 dash 1 dot 02 dot 002. To convert an existing vacant building to a multifamily affordable housing procedure with eight efficiency and seven one-bedroom apartments for the property at 462, 464 West Market.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Velez. Burgos. Davis.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have a motion for the variance for maximum impervious surface?
Recommend to approve, uh, variance for maximum total minimum open space found in section 1303 dot 12D to convert an existing vacant building. to multifamily affordable housing for seniors with eight efficiency and seven one-bedroom apartments for one property at four six two, uh, dash four six four West Market Street. And, and the zoning district.
Motion second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Velez.
Aye.
Burgos. Davis.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. How do we have a, a motion for the variance on impervious for the surface?
I make a motion to recommend approval of a maximum, uh, of a variance for maximum total, total, wow, impervious space found in section thirteen oh three dot one two D to convert an existing vacant building into a multifamily.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Velez.
Aye.
Burgos. Davis.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have a motion for the variance for off-street parking?
Recommend to approve of variance, uh, for off-street parking and with the parking stalls and aisles found in section thirteen oh nine, uh, dot zero three D to convert an existing vacant building to a multifamily affordable housing with eight seniors, uh, with eight efficiency and seven one-bedroom apartments for provenance four six two dash four six four West Market in the UN two zoning district.
Motion second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Velez. Burgos.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have a motion for the special exception?
I recommend approval of a special exception to allow multifamily use as defined in section thirteen oh four dot oh one dash one dot oh two dot oh oh two for the property located at four sixty-two dash four sixty-four West Market Street on the condition that the special exception expires on transfer of property.
Second.
If I may ask, if that's if it's a transfer of property and change from senior use? Or would you just want to be...
Any, any transfer of the property would then require to come back through, yeah.
Johnson.
Aye.
Velez, Burgos, Davis.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, John.
Okay, so now, now we're going to jump back to the, to the part where, for the review and comment motion to recommend approval for the zoning ordinance amendment.
Are you going to address this, Nancy, or what?
I can if you want to.
Yes, please.
So, this is, um, my paperwork, hold on. This was introduced at city council. It is an ordinance amendment, amending part thirteen of the Planning Zoning Code Title One, zoning ordinance of the City of York, codified ordinances, Article thirteen oh two, definitions to provide for definitions related to vape and smoke shops, Article thirteen oh three, to provide vape and smoke shops as a permissible use in the EC district, and Article thirteen oh four, use definitions, general provisions, accessory uses, conditional uses, and special exception use requirements to include regulations governing a vape and smoke shop city within, vape, I'm sorry, vape and smoke shop use within the city. So, this is before you, it has to come before the planning commission. We do not have, currently have a vape and smoke shop use in our ordinance. This would be putting it in there with making it a special exception use in the EC zoning district only, and every other district a variance.
Am I correct in understanding this was tabled at council? Was that to come here?
Yeah, it has to come here then also, and it will also have to go in front of York County Planning Commission as well, which is scheduled for November eighteenth.
Your county, who?
Planning Commission.
So, if we have questions or comments on it, they're just passed along because obviously there's no one here to...
No, we do, we have Teresa Janescu from city council who is just happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Could you step forward, please?
Sure, don't mind me, I'm just a few hours back from watching our son, grandson all week long in Virginia Beach. Little guy, and spending time with the toddlers, really, you know, a world of young people. Okay, so, this was tabled. First of all, the intent of this is to really put these products further reach from our youngest, our young people. Mother came to city council to report that her daughter had OD'd on some products she bought, she was underage, at one of the neighborhood vape shop. And, oh, she died, she did not die, she's pretty covered, but we had other concerns, I heard about other, you know, issues related to access to young people. So, we understand that there are a lot of these shops, and currently they're trying not to be regulating them. So, this zoning ordinance would only be, you know, all these provisions would apply to uses approved, you know, after adoption. So, we tabled this because we realized there's so, there are so many of these, you know, shops in the city right now. So, in order to make our work completely tabled, it's a moratorium on any approvals until council asks to approve this. And what our solicitor will be doing is going back at the licensing end of it and amending the licensing ordinance to include that somebody's got all these provisions because it would be a hardship to existing stores, um, to change some existing stores who have residential already in one of those, et cetera, et cetera. But to go ahead and modify, probably with provisions four, five, and six, that would prohibit access to youth unless they're, you know, even entering the store, unless there's some parent who's bothering with that. So, we thought it would be most effective if we tabled it. We're hoping to have the amended licensing ordinance in front of us in committee this month, and then to reintroduce everything at the November meeting, and hopefully pass these two complementary ordinances.
Question, what is the legal ramification for them selling tobacco minors? Or any kind of product to minors that is regulated with a designated age of eighteen or twenty-one?
Excuse me, can you repeat that?
What is, what is their ramification if a smoker vape shop sells to a minor or somebody under the age of twenty-one?
Well, as far, I'm not really sure on that, I do know, and I can't say that Commissioner Muldrake out there, you know, hearing the testimony from their mother, they did do a, just a sweep, and they went and sent, you know, minors into the shops, and found that it wasn't a lot, you know, in compliance. I don't know what the fine is or the, you know, currently, you know, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, there was a, if you had it in front of you, there should be some sort of penalty listed. I just quickly grabbed my summary before coming in.
Hold on, let me...
Do we believe that if, let's say, this teenager would have had to walk an additional five hundred feet to get to one of these places that she would not have bought the product and would not have OD'd on the substance?
It just puts it a little further, makes it a little more inconvenient, I mean, definitely, and then like one, you know, this was pretty much the standard procedure and use now as we look at. By trying to move them away from places where it's uncomfortable for them.
Is there a reason, uh, this one specifically makes me uncomfortable, that we are including religious structures in this? Five hundred feet from any religious structure?
Again, a place where we congregate for different types of activities, again, it was pretty much the standard provision and the model used now, it's a little bit...
It's similar to, to liquor.
Sure, that's weird, I mean, there's a liquor store right across from a church, so what is that doing?
I mean, and the church owns the liquor store, don't they?
Yeah, so.
So...
And I'm, you know, I, I know I drove by York School of Technology, and there's a big shop right on the corner driveway. It's, you know, it couldn't make it easy, and I know I used to teach at York Catholic many moons ago, the students could walk to the, you know, shop on Mount Rose, and they did.
Question, um, given that there is some seeming concentration of these vape shops in, within the New York City area, do you know if there are any special exceptions or provisions being allowed that seems to create the volume of, of stores or vape shops within, within the city? Are there any special exceptions, something that, something that seems to make it easier for these stores to open up and appear within the city?
Or are they very easy, unless, you have an answer, do you have any comment on that?
So, what this will do is it can't viol, I mean, cannot have us close down any ones that are currently there. So, right now, other than the one that's right here on Market Street, they only are just a typical vape shop. All the rest of them are considered retail general because they sell a lot of other things. They're not just selling the vape or the smoke shop, that type of thing.
No, got it, so my, my question is, I guess, um, it just seems like there, there's a concentration of this particular type of store within York City. Is there anything that's making them, uh, is there anything that's, uh, that's, any provision that, that helps, that helps these stores, like, uh, the owners of these stores come into the area, is there any like special exception or any, what's the word I'm looking for?
I, I think what you're trying to say is there, is there something that's favorable that's attracting them into this community?
I think it's the lack of an ordinance like we're proposing that makes it so easy. You know, we're trying to, you know, we're trying to, you know, we're trying to catch up with something that's happening at, you know, pro, it's a business is growing. I, I wish there were other businesses growing as rapidly in York City as the smoke shop and vape business. But I think we're trying to address that it is so easy, and that enough members of the community express concern, especially mostly access to young people, and access to minors.
If I could just address that, Mr. Moore, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the word you want to say, what attracts these people to this? So, because, just, and this is just me speaking based upon being planner and the previous zoning officer, is because they are mostly located on corners, and I call them bodegas, but, and they sell other things than just this, and the people that don't have cars and live close and want to come for other things, um, are, you know, it's attractive, like, hey, okay, we want it in our neighborhood because if I want to go get a quart of milk or something, but it's also, it has to be, they're trying to regulate just the, the smoke and the vape part of the shops. As it was before, it was just, you know, stores could sell cigarettes all the time, didn't seem to matter, but now it's because it's so dangerous, I guess, to people's health.
Yeah, no, I, I say bodegas and like corner stores, but I'm just, like, there's nothing wrong with, like, you know, like at decor deli, selling cigarettes and things like that, I, I get that, but it, there seems to be like specifically vape shops popping up. And so, if we're addressing this, I'm just saying, is there, is there something that's drawn them to the area? Anything that's, any favorable conditions that, uh...
I think the lack of any kind of, I think, I mean, we're looking at, I don't, I don't have the whole ordinance in front of me, when I saw this on the agenda, just getting home from Virginia Beach, couldn't I go back and reread it? I wish I could read that back, but I think we were looking at the percentage of products that are sold. I mean, some of, there's one, you know, that we walked in once, it first opened, a friend of mine, our morning lot, just a chicken, and you could see that plainly, even though it was considered a corner store, most of the items they were, products they were selling were vape-related, the hookahs, the, you know, and just, you know, they were mostly, so I guess it's looking at what is this store really? And trying to define what is a smoking vape shop, trying to what they're selling, what, you know, and then trying to keep access, you know, way to these shops from our young people.
In, in your ordinance here, it says ten percent, ten percent or more of total merchandise of, as tobacco, tobacco products, vape products, or unregulated cannabinoid products. So, that's ten percent.
And I've kind of, I've got two questions. Part of that is a lot of them, a lot of the ones that I think we're talking about, uh, like sell food. So, if we're restricting them, like, and you said it won't affect anybody that already exists, but like if somebody new comes up and they have that same mantra where they have food, snacks, convenience store stuff...
For a smoking vape shop, they won't be able to do that. But we won't go back and, because I understand the one on Princess Street sells fabulous fried chicken, you know, no, we're not going to go back and put up, you know, harm that business because they exist under, you know, but what will happen is the license, you know, some of these provisions may apply to them as far as young people, children, minors, you know, being unable to enter, you know, so if they want to buy fried chicken, they're going to have to go in with a parent or a guardian to do it, if they're selling more than that ten percent.
And my next part of the question is, if one of these places that already exists, for instance, the one on Princess and Duke, uh, what happens then? Like, does, do they have to come back in front of us or through their whole process if it's already designated as a vape, as vape and smoke shop?
Okay, I think I caught most of it, that's why I was telling you, speak up a little bit because it, I couldn't really hear you, but you're asking if the ones that already exist that also sell other things, so they will not be affected by this.
No, I don't know what happens if the business transfers, though. I don't think there's anything in the position about that. I, that would probably fall under whatever zoning, whether they have to come back. If one that's, you know, operating under the old rules sells, and the new owner wants to continue, would they have to come back to zoning?
So, I think, let me see if this is covering it.
Start following, they, I believe they have to start following, they have the, the rules to apply to that.
Yeah, each vape and smoke shop legally existing on the effective date of this section may continue to operate as a legal non-conforming use until change or expansion of the legal non-conforming use or a violation of any federal, commonwealth, or local law, after which the use shall lose its legal non-conforming use status and must comply with this section. So, if they don't comply with what the new rules are going to be, then...
Approve and license after adoption of this, I believe we have to follow the new provisions.
Currently, we have these different shops throughout the, well, probably the vast majority of the different zoning districts. Going after, going forward after adoption, you're, you're saying it can only be restricted to, to the EC zones?
Uh, it will only be a special, permitted by special exception in the EC zoning district. All the other zoning districts will need a variance, so they'll have to show hardship.
So, they could still open with a variance in, in, say, UN two district?
They could. Because if you look at, if you look at the part where I copied it in your packet, this is exactly what it's going to look like on our, um, on the chart, the thirteen oh eight, the, the chart that exists now, it'll just be they're adding a new use here under fourteen oh one dot oh oh two, and here it'll be, you know, anything for any use that doesn't have anything in it means there, needs a variance, but it'll be a, by special exception in the EC zoning district. And I'm thinking because EC is part of thirty out there, and that's kind of further out, you know, you mostly have to have a parent drive the children there or whatever.
So, if someone wants to open a, one of these shops in the UN two, you're saying all they need is a variance to do so? How does the remainder of this ordinance affect them?
I'm sorry, what was that again?
How does the remainder, the requirements in here, in the, in the ordinance, how does that affect a new shop in UN two district?
Well, it'll be, it'll be under the description, that's on the chart, the thirteen oh eight chart, and then there'll be a full-blown description of what all that will be required under this new ordinance, under this new use, just as it is for anything else, multifamily, conversion from a different use. That will be all in the ordinance as well, under everything listed, so if the, if they decide to, you know, um, it'll be under the special exception provisions, just like there's going to be parking requirements, uh, one off-street parking space for every hundred and fifty feet of gross floor area. just like there's going to be parking requirements, uh, one-off street parking space for every 150 feet of gross floor area. You, you can see it. It's all written right here under the chart. It'll be the definition and then your general provisions as well, just like any other use that's in the ordinance now, except for the, um, city council came up with all of these things for the definition.
So the, uh, once we get past comprehensive planning, go into zoning, this would be included in the new zoning ordinance? And you're stating that, or you're saying that these definitions and general provisions will be part of that new ordinance?
Correct. Well, it's going to be before that because it will be, once that, once it, you know, moves from you and then the, um, York County planning and then back to city council, there will be an amendment to our current zoning ordinance and it will be added before that time. But yes, it will be carried over into the new zoning ordinance, the new zoning ordinance, right?
So assuming our comments, the reason for this is to have comments and pass them on. How do we make, like, even individually, an official, like, statement? Do I say it and you write it down and you pass it on? Or do I say it and she just remembers it? Or?
Or do we have to go to city council?
What do we do?
We, we need to make a recommendation to adopt, correct?
Correct. Well, recommendation for it to move it back to city council where it came from. So that is all that I was told, to put it on the planning commission agenda for review and a recommendation for approval for the, um, city council.
All right. Well, then if it's on YouTube or it's being recorded, then we have it and someone can go back and look. I will at least, uh, say how I feel about this. I think we've come across things like this before where we have bad things that are happening as a result of, let's say, poor enforcement or not big enough fines or, you know, things that are illegal that we're like, oh, well, this isn't working, so let's make it more illegal somehow. I, I don't believe that we should be regulating things that are already illegal. We don't need to fence off things that are, you're like, there's the fence, there's a thing you can't do, don't do it. I would think that if the vices of the world can help subsidize the walkability and access to grocery and supplies in the city, we talked forever about food deserts and we seem to have a lot of bodegas popping up. And one of the things certainly, uh, you know, enabling that and subsidizing that are these products, along with those, you know, personally, I would say stupid not gambling machines that are in every one of them now, where you're like, look, I don't care, it's illegal for them to use the machines, it's illegal for them to buy these products. And if those things can exist for the customer that can buy them so that the other stuff can exist and a kid can walk within their same block and buy their groceries or get milk for breakfast or whatever they need to do, uh, I believe that leads to a more healthy city. I would have welcomed an ordinance that would have said, okay, well, how about we keep all of these things behind the counter? How about we not put them in the window? How about we not light them all up like the sun at midnight when we're, you know, putting four million watts of LEDs in all the windows, highlighting all the glass that we have for hookah smoking? That, I think, is the kind of ordinance that would, you know, remove some of the enticement and make it a lot harder to access the product. But just saying where it can and can't be, I don't think will actually change anything in the long run, other than maybe make things less viable and then we have less corner stores. So that is my opinion, so that it's on the record.
To add to that, uh, as this is taken back to city council for, for review, I would say, I'd like to say just like, for, to be on the record, we say that, uh, is, is there any, uh, is there anything, any data being, being tracked? Let's see, as there are more stores popping up, eh, within New York City area, are we generally tracking, like, the, the population, the economic growth or decline within the area as, as these stores are beginning to become, you know, more numerous or increasing volume within a certain area? So I just think that it's better to, at some point, begin to have a data-driven approach. So because we can, we can be up here expressing our, our opinions and, you know, everyone has their own opinion, but to be able to back some of that up with hard data, you know, what is this doing, you know, as, and it's, it's never one driver. But to say, okay, as stores that have certain vices begin to pop up, we can see the population begin to possibly shift or what happens to the surrounding tax base or what's the economic growth in the area? Just so we can begin to, like, track these metrics as stores like this and similar to it begin to pop up. I, I would just like to say that, I would like it to be considered and discussed once brought back to city council.
I'm also just a little curious of where the 10% number comes from. Mostly because we have other convenience stores like Turkey Hill and Rudders within city limits. What percentage of their sales go to tobacco or tobacco-related products? I'm, I'm just kind of curious as to where the 10% comes from.
Again, members of council and solicitor, we reviewed, uh, other municipal ordinances, zoning ordinances. I think, I did a very good look at Philadelphia's and asked where much of the content of this ordinance comes from.
Is there a way to track that number?
Well, I'm not sure if there will be a regular inspection of these businesses to track that number. I'm not sure how that would be verified, but that's a good question. Uh, do we verify that 10%?
It would depend on internal sales tracking, I would believe.
I'm sure the state has some type of way of knowing, especially when it comes to regulated products of tobacco. But I'm just curious as to how, like, uh, most of us living in York remember a time where we had a gas station that was closer to the heart of the city. Now you have to travel outside of, well, close to outside of the city to get to one. How do we attract other businesses that have high volumes of tobacco sales as well as gas stations to come back into our community? But how does that also affect the Turkey Hills, the Rudders, whatever could be in store with scum down? Like, how do we track that 10%? Cause then we're putting them at a limit as well.
So if I could kind of speak on this, I'm not sure exactly in this case, but if you recall, remember when restaurants had to quit smoking, stop smoking if they sold X amount percentage of food in comparison to alcohol or a bar? I think it's tracked because they have to do different inventory things and have to keep track. I'm not sure what agency does it exactly, as far as that's concerned. But I do know that restaurants and the bars had to, you know, show evidence that they weren't selling any more than 35%, I believe it was, food. If I'm, if I'm not correct, it's somewhere there.
Agreed. But like, the liquor control board kind of will make sure that that is being in control. We're putting in, writing in ordinance in New York City. What is the accessibility to our government to enforce anything? Or are we just providing a word service, I guess is my question? Cause while, I mean, we all agree tobacco minors shouldn't be a thing. Is, what is the action in order to enforce this, um, to ensure the safety of the community? And how do we get that data to know when we should be enforcing it?
Any other comments or questions? I'll take all this back to council. Hoping this will be on our committee meeting agenda and that's where we can really begin to make additional amendments and changes. Not only to, you know, not only to introduce the, the licensing for current, but also to look at, I guess, some of these issues you raised with the incomings of this proposed zoning change.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this? Nancy, do we need to do a motion to recommend or, or is this just for our review?
I got the, no, you have to make a.
Is there a motion to forward this zoning ordinance amendment to city council for approval?
I mean, do we have to make one? I, I feel like we have a lot of questions and I'm not sure that, not being at the, at the council meeting when there was the public here that had an opinion and wanted to talk about it, I'm not really sure that I would feel comfortable making a recommendation. Can we not just send it back to city council?
I think we could make a, it would be, not a denial, but like what I'm trying to say.
A few meetings ago, I think we made a, we made a motion not to make it, not to make.
Yeah, we had that happen for sure. Like, I'm looking for a way to say, I motion to not recommend this as written. Like, and then that recommendation, that non-recommendation is sent forward of like, oh, we have problems with it, we have voiced the concerns. And if we would approve that motion, that means we as a govern, as a recommending body are approving the message that we do not like this as written. And so they can ignore that or redo it and send it back and be like, do you like it now? Or, hey, we don't care, we're doing it anyway, kind of thing.
And will it have to come back?
Only if they want to send, it doesn't have to. We're recommending only, dog.
Want to go ahead and make that motion?
I make a motion to not recommend approval of the ordinance discussed as written.
A second.
Do you want to make any other stipulations or?
I don't think I can. That's.
No, I meant it's. Part of it is addressing any concerns.
I think the, the notes and the transcript will express or pass on any of our concerns rather than enumerating them in the motion.
And I'm sure council already heard.
Yeah.
Many of them.
And can I just get a clarification? We're making a motion to not make a recommendation, not to.
Well, we're making a recommendation and it's to not approve it.
As written.
Which is different than not having a recommendation. That's a neutral position.
I just don't like the way it's written.
Okay.
Make a recommendation to not.
No, that's different. I am recommending that we do not accept the ordinance as written. Yes. So that we are passing a recommendation and that is, don't do this. Which is different than saying, we don't have an opinion or we approve it.
So. Is the second clear, clear on what he, on he's stating?
Yes, that's the second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burgos.
Aye.
Velez. Davis.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Thank you. Now where are we?
House of Mental Gymnastics there.
Okay, our next case is 27 dash 2025 dash Z dash V, 476 West Market. First, we'll hear from staff.
Okay, case number 27 dash 2025 dash Z dash V. Property address, 476 West Market Street. Applicant is Monique Dowry, 1487 Wayne Avenue, York, PA 17403. The owner is Leon Zuckermin, 466 West Market Street, York, PA 17403. Zoning district is the UN2 Urban Residential Neighborhood District. Applicant would like to convert a single-family dwelling into an apartment combined with commercial. One, um, one variance appeal for the use. The zoning ordinance does not permit apartment combined with commercial use in this zoning district. Staff has reviewed the variance provisions for this property. Therefore, staff recommends denial of a request for a variance to allow a two-unit combined with commercial on the bottom floor at 476 West Market Streets.
Good evening. My name is Adam McAllister. I'm the Realtor for Mr. Zuckermin. On June 19th, uh, we had entered into an agreement of sale with Mr. Dowry for Maple Street Holdings LLC. Mr. Zuckermin has owned the property since 1987 and it has been a commercial property up until the point that was undetermined, uh, through the process that we found out that there was a special carve-out done several years ago, um, on this block. The property has been operated as a mixed use or commercial use during his entire ownership of the property, up until the last couple of years where it has really just kind of been a spot that he's been there. There has not been any, uh, tenant in there within the last 18 months. The first floor unit, uh, of, of the home has already, or has been and continues to be a separate entrance with two forms of egress. It is, or it is already developed into a separate office space on the first floor with two half bathrooms. The upstairs, which is a two-bedroom apartment, uh, which also has two forms of egress as well as separate heating, uh, from the first floor, um, is also a livable unit. We have gone through and checked off most of the boxes, uh, that the city has asked as far as it being a commercial or multi-use. And that is, there is separate parking, uh, out front where there is metered parking along West Market Street. And then the back of the property, there is space for 10 vehicles to park comfortably. And if they're smaller cars, they can park even more comfortably. So they are, so there's parking out back, separated. There is metered parking out front. It is my, our understanding that Mr. Dowry is looking to put his tax accounting office on the first floor and then have the second floor as either space that he can rent out or could be for, um, someone else to live there. That is the best of our, uh, understanding. So, uh, we're just trying to facilitate the sale of the property, um, from Mr. Zuckermin to Mr. Dowry. With that, any questions you have, I'm happy to answer the best of my ability.
Sorry. Stairs and an apartment downstairs. It would have to be commercial downstairs.
Correct. Yes, commercial always has to be on the first floor if they were to sell it. If Mr. Dowry was to sell it later and someone wanted to make an, an apartment on the first floor, they would need to come back then for the multifamily use.
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Zuckermin owns it?
Yeah, Mr. Zuckermin owns it.
And he's selling it?
Correct. Yes.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public that would like to address this case?
Just have one question. Will there be any modifications to the exterior or is it all as it is right now?
Can you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Telia's 450 West Market.
Yeah, to answer your question, sir, uh, as we're understanding, no changes or modifications to the exterior and very little changes to the interior since the first floor is already set up as an office area. That's completely separated from the first, from the second quarter. So yeah, any, any changes would be at this point cosmetic in the inside. Yeah. Exactly. Yeah. Yeah. Very, very popular lot here tonight.
Anyone else? Do we have a variance to allow apartment combined with commercial use?
I recommend approval of a variance to allow an apartment combined with commercial use as defined in section 1304 dot 01 dash 1 dot 03 dot 001 for the property at 476 West Market Street.
Any further discussion? A roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Velez.
Aye.
Burgos. Davis.
Aye.
Moore.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next case is twenty-nine dash twenty-two-five dash Z dash S E dash V, three-seventy-three West Market Street.
I'm going to read in the staff review in a second, I just wanted to remind anybody that was here tonight, they do have to come back on Thursday. Any of the applicants, come back on Thursday to the zoning hearing board. All right, our last case for the evening is case number twenty-nine dash twenty-two-five dash Z dash V. Property address is three-seventy-three West Market Street. The applicant is Mustafa Jamison, three-seventy-three West Market Street, York, PA, one-seven-four-oh-four, and the owner being the same person. The zoning district is CBD Central Business District. Applicant would like to convert a three-unit multifamily dwelling into a group home with eighteen occupants. Variance appeal number one, the applicant seeks a variance for a group home, six to eight occupants, to allow up to eighteen as defined in section thirteen-oh-four dot oh-one-one dot oh-four dot zero-zero-one B at three-seventy-three West Market Street in the CBD zoning district. Therefore, staff recommends denial of a variance to allow a group home with six to eight occupants for the property at three-seventy-three West Market Street. Variance for the use, the applicant seeks a variance, since the proposed use does not meet the ordinance requirement of a group home in this zoning district. The property is a three-unit home, staff has reviewed the variance provisions in thirteen-eleven dot one-zero dot D. Therefore, staff recommends denial of a used variance to allow group home for the property at three-seventy-three West Market Street.
Is the applicant present? Could you step forward and provide your name, please?
Good evening, my name is Carmella Disoma, and I'm the Assistant Director of Operations for the Lancaster Harrisburg and York Harm Reduction Project, as well as the provider for SOAR funding in York County. I'm here tonight alongside Mr. Jamison, the owner and operator of People Under Safe Housing. We both will be speaking tonight, just to ensure that accurate and clear information is shared, full transparency. We, yes, we are currently licensed as a three-dwelling unit, and we were requesting a variance to allow occupancy for up to eighteen people. We have to remember that this unit is divided by floors, each floor operates as its own unit, each floor has its own electrical bill, each floor has its own entry, exit, emergency exit, its own kitchen, its own bathroom, and it's ensuring the safety and organization within the home. In addition, we request a change in zoning classification of group homes, that change would allow the, allow us to be in compliance with city regulations, while maintaining the structure and the supportive environment that we have. With that being said, give you some context before this. As you probably do know, we're facing a real housing crisis in York City. As of today, a hundred and seventy-one individuals are staying at life path shelter tonight due to homelessness. This underscores the urgent need for more supportive housing for those experiencing homelessness, reentering the community from incarceration, and for those in active recovery. People under safe housing is stepping up to meet that need, and we're here tonight not to start something new, but to align with the city's process and clarify our status. The home at three-seventy-three West Market Street has already been operating as a D-DAP license with public residents. It provides structured and supportive housing for individuals rebuilding their lives. Residents are carefully screened, they must follow program rules, they adhere to curfews, they need, they have to meet employment requirements and participate in not only weekly meetings, but outside treatment programs as well. The home is staffed daily, and it's built to ensure safety, accountability, and structure for all that are there. At this point, I'd like to give Mr. Jamison, owner of People Under Safe Housing, the opportunity to share.
Before that, he got licensed in two thousand twenty-four, I was already helping individuals out of facing homelessness and dealing with substance abuse. I was bringing him in, I was sending, I've been sending him to treatment, giving him a place to live without a dollar. And then I helped him get a job after returning from treatment and everything like that. Prior to this, prior to this license, I came before, I came before as a looking for good rooms, but I needed to get myself together myself, I needed to get myself together. I went and got my certification for a family recovery specialist, along with other license that he got required. I went out, got that, so I can help the individual that's on Market Street that's homeless and dealing with substance abuse. Not only do I support them, I feed them, I donate clothes to them, and I open my doors to any individuals that's in the recovery process.
Also, like, this isn't something new. He's been doing this in a way that has reduced homelessness, has helped people, that has helped people and supported public safety. So pretty much, the Central Business District is crucial for the success of People Under Safe Housing. The residents need access to jobs, they need transportation, and the services that are right there. Without this location, many would fall back into homelessness or relapse. He has been a part of this neighborhood quietly doing his work. All that he's asking for is to allow him to continue doing his work as a group home with the variances that he needs to be in code with the city. He has, currently has a staff of certified family recovery support specialists, peer support specialists, social worker. He provides supervision and ensures residents have guidance and support around the clock. In addition, we maintain strong connections with local agencies for food, clothing, counseling, healthcare services, as Mr. Jamison mentioned. We're proud to serve as a bridge between recovery and the city's broader supportive service network. From my position with SOAR funding, I personally work with residents, several in the Mr. Jamison's program, helping them cover rent, obtaining identification, obtaining birth certificates, which are vital pieces of information that are needed to be able to find an employment. We act, help them access treatment, and my office is located on the ground floor of the same building, so I witness the positive impact of this program every single day, and the changes that he's made in people's lives because of it. People under safe housing fills a crucial gap in York's continuum of care. It reduces homelessness, relapse, desitism, while giving individuals a real opportunity for stability, independence, and long-term recovery. Mr. Jamison created a program that is structured, compliant, and respectful to both his residents and the neighborhood. I want to assure you that his facility is fully compliant with city regulations and standards, and should be run as a group home. He provides essential resources for support and individuals in recovery, and I'd like to respectfully remind everyone that individuals recovering from a substance use disorder are protected under the Federal Fair Housing Act. This protection recognizes them as a group entitled to fair and equal housing opportunities, which is one of the reasons we should qualify as a group home, and are committed to upholding these standards. Prior to Mr. Jamison acquiring this property, it was operated by Life Path Shelter, which also housed multiple individuals. We're here simply asking to continue that legacy by providing much-needed housing, which we lack in the city of York. We want to be compliant with the city code, we want to be in compliance with regulations. We take every measure to maintain a safe and supportive environment, and are dedicated to be being a responsible part of the community, as Mr. Jamison has been this entire time. Thanks for the consideration of the variance request, and we're happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Carmella, can we start with, you said your first name is Carmella, what is your last name?
Disoma, D-I-S-O-M-M-A.
I'm sorry, again, please. And, and you're the Assistant Director for?
The Lancaster York Harrisburg Harm Reduction Project.
Harm reduction?
You said that your office is on the first floor?
On the ground floor of People Under Safe Housing, yes.
Is that on your, in your, is that what's labeled as common area?
So one of the, it would be, it's right, right up there. Should be right there, yeah.
My question is the basement, there's two entrances or exits into the basement, what's the basement used for?
So right now, the basement, one part of the basement, we have a laundry room in the back, so the residents can just stare and come upstairs and wash their clothes. And the front part of the basement, I hold meetings, so the house leaders should know what the individual's going through, leak, and what is the game plan. Not only that, we just go over things that they could be stressed about, which can cause them to be.
You have three separate apartments that are individually housed themselves. How do you even know? How are you going to change that into it then opening up to become one home or one access? I think if somebody kind of wants to shut the door in that apartment.
I can understand.
And not allow anybody else in.
So on one, we have two doors, we have two entrances, so downstairs, downstairs where our offices, and behind us is like the four bedrooms or whatever. That's the door to get downstairs. The second floor is on to the left, they can walk upstairs, they can get into the second floor, into one space, they have the front door and a back door to get out, and a fire escape. The third floor is just the same thing, they go all the way to the third floor, they have one entrance and a back door for exit.
Are you going to have twenty-four-hour staff?
Pretty much, yes.
I'm not sure, but possibly what she was meaning is, each one of these rooms are going to be secure?
Yes.
Or anybody can walk in?
No.
No, no, no. The whole residence stay locked, front doors stay locked, we got codes that enter to each floor, each door.
So, so with that, you will have overnight staff, like, is it like twenty-four hours?
We have a house lead on each floor. The person that runs this overnight, that is on each floor. So each individual floor, the third floor has their own house lead, the second floor has a house lead that is there, and then first and second, every floor has a house lead that will report back to me also, I have cameras there.
I was going to ask, do you have cameras in the common areas?
No, I got cameras throughout the whole.
In the common area?
Yes, nine, nine. People have.
Yes, no, not the bedrooms, I'm sorry, yes.
So it's going to staff on each floor, different shifts for twenty-four hours?
So.
So the main, so the ground floor during the day, so from seven AM to five PM, Mustafa's there, I'm there, and another staff member, I'm there. So we have a social worker, I'm here, and we have Mustafa, and then we have the recovery support specialist, that's one site, nine to five, usually nine to three, eight to five, usually eight to six. After that, the house lead takes over, and they're in charge, pretty much, of their floor for that night. If there's an emergency, they should know what to do, if there's an emergency, you know, we don't need to, one-one, we'll call Mustafa, who lives literally four minutes from the property. There's, the whole, I mean, if there is an emergency such as a fire, let's say, safety, the house is equipped with a program in service that if there's a fire, if there's smoke detected, as the program is, the house will alarm the program, the program will call the fire department, so it's being monitored twenty-four-seven.
And clarifications, I think what they were trying to get, that the house lead is somebody that is in the program currently, that has learned and built trust with the powers that be to be appointed to that?
Yes.
Mr. Velez, let me, I'm going to quote from you for the group home qualification, "An onsite resident staff person must be present at all times. This person is to be identified as a paid professional with an appropriate license or certification. Any resident receiving treatment for the disability for which this home was established shall be, shall be precluded from serving in this capacity." So what this actually is stating for you is that you can't have a person that's being treated for the disability as a house person, it has to be a licensed person. But everybody in a group home has to be, no more than two residents, and it says, "Individuals with disabilities as defined and protected," so they all have to be sharing some sort of disability.
Right, if they're living in the home, correct? So if they're working, if they're there at night during the third shift, they're not living there, then, and they're not in recovery, then they would be eligible. If they're a family support specialist, then.
Correct, if they are a licensed, a licensed person, not a person that is there, and now you think that they're probably the best person out of the group.
Correct, if they have the certification as a family support specialist or as a peer support specialist, then that makes them eligible.
So are you saying that none of the residents are going to be this lead person? You have staff that come in in the evening as the lead?
That will be the lead, yes.
So they are not, they're utilizing the services?
Exactly.
They're not a resident.
They're not a resident.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, because that's not allowed.
Yeah.
Two, two questions, one at a time. You, you're, I heard you are going to help these people, your clients, with job searches, correct? So, if they, okay, so you do have some kind of structure around helping them find jobs? So what is the, your estimated average timeframe for providing support?
I give them up to six months to two years, because if they don't recover, sometimes it really runs to individuals that just can't get it right. And I don't just put them out, because the world, obviously, the world is cold, but I do a lot of work with them. They need more treatment, I let them sit, I let them stay, and just focus on, I give them the main support. So between six to twelve months, I'm likely to still be that to have them six to twelve or twenty-four months, sorry.
Got it, and does that cover like your receivables, or, like, you're like, if you have them with six to twelve months, does that cover, so at the end of twelve months, if they still need more time, they rela, they go out, find a job, something happens, they relapse, God forbid?
They're welcome to come back.
For another six to twelve?
As long as a bed is available.
Got it, right.
I mean, overall, the goal here is to, you know, get them, get them better, get them stabilized, get them in a program that's supporting their recovery, so that they're in a place where they feel confident enough within themselves to come out of the shell, to come out of the housing situation they're in, and, you know, move into their own place. So I have individuals that have been at People Under Safe Housing for over a year, and they, one individual recently just moved, and I helped him get funding, moved in his own place. We paid the double security deposit, we paid the first three months of rent, you know, and make sure that we get them stabilized, so that all our clients can eventually be at that part, in that place in their life, to get their own place. It's impossible, it's not that it's impossible, it makes it very, very hard for an individual to stay sober if they're living in the street. I mean, it's, it's nearly impossible for an individual to maintain and keep employment if they don't have a house to go to, or a shower, or, you know, the basic needs that many people take for granted. We want to help people, but if we don't house them first, how are we going to get them to a place where they are secure enough to, you know, get a job, make new friends, you know, find a recovery center, I mean, find supportive recovery services that will help them, get the medical attention that they need. These are all things that we, our clients do.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So I guess in between helping the clients look for employment, do you have any activities that we do perform, like onsite, I guess in between?
So like, how we run our program? Yeah, so we offer straight case management, so our clients come in, we do an intake process, find out what they're. So our clients come in, we do an intake process, find out what their needs are besides housing, right? I mean, if they don't have a job, if they don't have clothing, go over all that. Um, we offer meetings in the building, um, we offer, um, budget classes, teaching them about financial literacy. Um, I mean, some of our clients don't have a school home, we help them get their GED. I mean, our goal is to, to be able to help individuals get to these programs and learn, like, these are all the things that we could be doing right now. Unless we don't offer it, we will connect you, we've been observing client cases to get the services that they need. So it's not like they just come there and just do whatever they want. It's like a strict, you know, we.
The structure of what's.
It's structured, it's very structured.
Okay.
I feel, uh, like I'm being a real wordy hard ass today, uh, so I apologize. Uh, but Ms. DeSema, he said, uh, Mr. Jackson Commissioners, uh, I have previously expressed concerns with this neighborhood, this block and potentially even this property, if not one very, very, very similar, uh, a couple of years ago. Uh, I a hundred percent recognize the need for these services, uh, the need for these services in a continuum of treatment and solution. Uh, I recognize the need for housing at all tiers, for everyone. Uh, I empathize with everything and all involved, uh, with this. But I believe the concentration of services in this block is a detriment that outweighs the positive impact of additional housing of any type. Um, to further concentrate those services into a single neighborhood, uh, as I've said before, I feel is unfair to the existing residents, uh, homeowners or renters alike, uh, existing businesses and potential future businesses. I would gladly welcome one of these even in my own neighborhood. I'd be like, this is needed, blah, 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 we need more housing of every kind. It's just, I have, I have expressed before that we seem to concentrate in one single block and I feel like that is not good. I'm not trying to convince you of anything, it's just that is, I wanted to restate that one.
I think an argument can be made for the opposite as well. Um, given that there is a homeless shelter there, serving people that have problems, that is a very short-term, uh, opportunity for them. Having somewhere within close proximity to a neighborhood they already, you know, been in and understand and respect at some point. I think that that close proximity could be a benefit for a path out of like.
I do not disagree. I believe proximity is absolutely important and that's why we concentrate services in a city. But this is a single block, one block that has most of these things. And I used to live in the ever-popular four hundred block of West Market that I, uh, and it just, I mean, I still have a garage over there and it is, I'm not saying it is necessarily a bad thing for these things to exist and I'm certainly not arguing a NIMBY case here because it's no longer my backyard. Uh, it's just, it, it is not an attractive block. It, there are people standing around a lot and I realize we need those services and they exist currently. I'm just saying to continue, you could move it two blocks away and people could still walk to these services and still get these services. And we would be distributing this a little bit more through a city instead of further concentrating it. And that's just my, the thing that I have a, a worry about, so.
Did we, did you ask the public that are here yet? If anybody had.
I presume they are the next people, yeah.
Can I say something in regards to that?
Sure.
So I understand where you're coming from completely and I'm, I'm possibly even agree with you if this was something new. If I came in front of you today and said, hey, I just purchased this building last week and I want to make it into a new group home on this block, then I could understand why you would say like, hey, we already have LightPath, we already have Dutch Kitchen, like we have these programs. But this isn't something new, this has been running as a D-DAP recovery home since twenty twenty-three. Like, so this isn't, this isn't new. We're not bringing twenty twenty-four, we're not, yeah, we're not with all, all the floors running as that. So we're not bringing something new, the neighborhood already knows us. And that's what you said comes into play. I, just me alone have, I think, assisted over a hundred and some clients from LightPath into getting their housing. We've opened door policy on the first floor to my office. So anybody from LightPath can walk over, ring the doorbell and ask for assistance and we will help them. Um, I can't speak on behalf of LightPath, I know LightPath is here, they might share a few words later, but it's, this isn't new, like, we've literally been helping the community on Market Street for years now. Like, we're not trying to open something new. And with that being said, we've never had an overdose inside our property. Um, like, we've run it in a great way and it's helped. We have residents here today that know, or that graduated our program, that are here to speak as well on behalf of people under safe housing.
How many people are currently being served?
So right now, we have three people on the first floor, on the ground floor. We have, um, six people on the first floor, second floor, and then six on the third.
Can I just make a clarification, please? I'm sorry to keep interrupting. However, the building is as, uh, Ms., I'm sorry, this, um, it says, okay, so it is not currently or should, should not currently be operating as a group home. So it's a disservice here because he has approval for three units, period. No offices, three units. He got approval for three units. D-DAP will give, he does have a D-DAP license, which we did look up. So D-DAP gives licenses and that's with the state based upon the square footage of the building, square footage. So he is, um, licensed to serve up to eighteen individuals. So it is wanna, I wanna clarify that because I think he's kind of moving into two separate areas. So he wants to change the use from the three units that he previously got approval for twenty twenty-two? Something like that, um, to a group home, serving eighteen individuals, which he does have a state D-DAP license to up to eighteen individuals that he could serve there. So, um, and when they, and when you do a group home, you can have an office such as hers or, you know, a place where the employees and the licensed people. She just kind of is kind of putting things together there that it is not to be operating currently as a group home, but as a three unit that he got permission for and they're coming in front of us to ask to change the use. So that's what I'm trying to clarify that right now. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address this case? Over here first. Could you state your name, please?
My name is Edward, Edward K-N-E-E.
Edward, you said?
Yes.
And what's the last name?
Me, K-N-E, like the name of your name.
K-N-E.
Yes. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am here on behalf of my personal business that I own. I'm a York County resident and I own Central Pennsylvania Recovery Services, which is eight properties within your city limits that I pay taxes on. I've been operating those properties for a little over four years with a D-DAP license. Um, I am not here in my professional capacity as a director of an agency. I've been asked to remain neutral on behalf of the agency that I work for as my full-time job. I got very, uh, familiar with Mustafa, uh, and the, the process that he's working and he took a look at how I run my licensed recovery homes and he is mirroring that process. And what I'm here today to just talk about and assure you of, uh, I get the concern of the problem block, the concentrated block. But I assure you from my observations personally, that block is not concentrated with anyone from Mustafa's property. He has very strict rules, more strict rules than any of my eight properties that I have under license and operate here in the city. And much like someone said, and I catch it, I hit the back of somebody's head, but you would want one in your neighborhood. My properties just so happen to operate like that, they're almost invisible and they sit within the neighborhood. They're licensed, they are, uh, appropriate use determined by the city as being appropriate use. Mustafa, uh, acquired this building from the shelter next door when he purchased it. And, um, he's been operating under these same circumstances, uh, over the past almost four years that I'm aware of. But I had encouraged him to get state licenses and pursue this, uh, to where he can continue to help people in the right manner. I think Mustafa just wants to do the right thing. He just needs to know what the right thing is. I understand the concerns of multiple units, but he is operating it as one unit. Uh, ma'am, you would ask how they get from one unit to the other. If you would take a tour of the building, it's actually an open concept building where there are steel fire doors between the facilities. Uh, but it is one big facility with a lock, that is with electronic locks and updated camera system. And I just was here to share with you if there is any question. I, I, I'm able to testify personally that how he runs this program, how he runs his groups is a very strenuous program, it's a very successful program. And I've seen very little recidivism come out of this program as far as individuals returning to homelessness or, uh, relapse or what we call recurrence.
Thank you. Anyone else? Step forward.
My name is Carlos Vargas.
I'm sorry, what is it?
Carlos Vargas.
Are you last name?
Y-A-R-G-I-S. Um, I was helped by Carmela, um, advised me to visit LightPath when I became homeless. Um, and LightPath was great. Um, his program and her program helped me and my daughter, I'm seeing that, um, helped me get an apartment. A house. They also helped me with full furniture, brand new, completely. Um, also, LightPath has helped me with three hundred dollars of furniture for my daughter and school loans. Mr. Ed helped me with that as well. Um, she helped me with a seventy-dollar gift card to the press, this, this store and Light, LightPath this store as well. Um, so they're all these programs are great programs from my experience. Um, as well, um, I went to address an accident, incident that happened, uh, Wednesday, I believe it was. Um, I was picking up a package that Mr. Ed, um, ordered for me and my daughter, uh, dressed her in other stuff. And, um, I was, uh, approached by a police officer and he told me to drop the package, that's how much. And asked, so why, why are you doing this? He said, because you're looking at the package, I guess, on yours, but not stop me, handcuffed me from my daughter. And I just wanted to address that as well and that, um, both individuals here and Carmela and Ed, they're, um, know part of the, why I picked up this package.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Michael Formant, F-O-R-M-E-N-T.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Michael Formant, F-O-R-M-E-N-T. Good evening, uh, you know, uh, I'm not really knowledgeable on these code stuffs and all that. Uh, first time I'm in a situation like this. Thank you for the YouTube, uh, uh, thing. Uh, I want, I'm gonna speak on behalf of my experience at his facility. Uh, I came to York about two and a half years ago. Uh, one of the things that attracted me to your city was the reputation this city has. That reputation is, it's a strong recovery city, okay? And, uh, I moved to the Lehigh Valley. I spent a, I spent a year, almost a year, at, uh, another, oh, excuse me, when you say group home, are you clarifying recovery houses then?
Pretty much.
So, so we don't have a specific ordinance for recovery house as of yet until we do the rewrite. So they either fall under group home or renting houses.
That's, that's, okay. Uh, but, uh, I, I spent almost a year, a block of the street from his facility. Uh, uh, and, uh, uh, what I found convenient for the area was for those who don't have transportation, uh, places to go for recovery-related meetings, if you will. It was readily available, bus terminal, readily available, doctor's offices, pharmacy's, readily available, which was something that, that was important to somebody especially coming to this city. Uh, I do understand, uh, what this gentleman over here mentioned about the concentration, if you will, of, uh, these facilities. But these facilities are there to provide to betterment for fellow human beings, okay? Uh, to me, that's, 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 that's what's most important. Uh, I then, after almost a year, I then moved to his facility. I spent just about a year there as well. Uh, uh, it's a, it's a, it's an interesting neighborhood, put it this way. But, uh, uh, what I found that, uh, I could relate to is, uh, I had to walk out every day at that front door and there was reality check, okay? Uh, and, uh, as much as I am someone, what I believe to be a, a caring human being, uh, uh, I could feel for those individuals and I believe Mr. Jamison feels for those individuals just as well. Uh, and, and it is sad, but it definitely helped motivate me, definitely did. Uh, because I was in their position, uh, their situation at one, at one point in my life. Uh, like, and like I said, we're talking about helping out here a fellow human being. Uh, I'm an individual who believes in both positive and negative energy. I believe by approving what Mr. Jamison is, uh, requesting, uh, that positive energy that's gonna exhibit out of his program, uh, I think could and would, uh, have a, an effect on the neighborhood. It may take quite a long time. Uh, I was grateful to be able to have his facility there to go to. Uh, I'm now in my own, own residence, uh, uh, but I didn't forget where I came from. I go back to his residence, uh, his business and, uh, uh, some of them just started recently. Uh, I'm bringing in weekly recovery meetings, okay? Uh, I'm grateful for, for, for what I have received in my process and in order to hold on to that, I have a responsibility to pay it forward. Uh, so, uh, what I'm asking the, the panel here, uh, to give consideration and, uh, take, take it all in mind and hopefully see it, uh, to approve it and, uh, if there are any questions, we're prepared to ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Dylan D-Y-A-N, last name is S-A-U-T-T-E-R.
S-A?
U-T-T-E-R. Uh, thank you for everybody letting me speak as well, I won't take anybody's time too much tonight. Um, I did want to come up here and just echo and mirror what everybody was saying about Push House. I, myself personally work as a homeless advocate in New York, so I know the struggles of people on the street and I carry a lot of stories with me and I could share a hundred of them about the great work that Push House does, which is people, uh, it's not his house. So, I was gonna do that, but what I really think is important here is to stress the fact that the displacement of people in New York right now is, is a huge issue and can't be understated. And I think, um, the displacement of anybody, especially out of a house that has people who are suffering from disease or they have co-occurring disease, co-occurring like a mental health or an SUD or EUD, they are the most marginalized and they will be sent out to. They are the most marginalized and they will be sent out to either prison or probably a tent because that's what we offer for people on the street. So I really want to get up here and say that, um, if if these people that, you know, Mustafa and Ed and all the other great people who are building these group homes and recovery homes or I forget what the other chairman, you guys are using now to rewrite it, but this is a necessary thing that is born out of a broken system. And unfortunately, that's what it's going to take right now for people to get well and be housed. There is one more thing I want to say, but now I think I lost it. So I appreciate you guys' time and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
One last.
Go ahead.
Just, uh, as way of history, uh, again, not to sway anyone or I'm just giving this as pure fact. This, uh, property, this is the same property that was before us in July of 2021. The, we approved a variance for an exception to owner occupied. Uh, we approved a variance to the minimum room size. Uh, and then when it came to the rooming house designation, Commissioner Velez made a motion to approve, but we did not have a second. And then I made a motion to deny, we had a second, but then the vote failed. And that was one of the very few times that we passed something along to zoning that did not have a recommendation. Based on the fact that, uh, Mr. Jackson is before us, Jackson, right?
Jamison.
Jamison, sorry, uh, is before us again, I presume that the zoning did not grant at least that last one. So it's just, that's the way of history of it is the same property, uh, that we had dealt with before. And I suppose it was then used as that after that point.
While we're talking about that specific day, we had multiple community members with both, both in person and letters that were presented against it. I have not heard any of that opposition today at all. And there are some major changes between the last time that he was here and when he was here now.
Sure.
Uh, there was not a state licensing in place. There wasn't a complete and thorough plan. There was not partnerships with other community organizations. This is a completely different, this is a completely different proposal that was put, put in front of us that was obviously well thought out. And again, I have to point to the people in the public that were here against it, that are not currently here now. And I think that with the outpouring of support with the community, our job as a recommending body is to pay attention to who, who is in the room and listen to what the community is saying because they entrust us to make recommendations based off of their voices as well. So I would like to point out, since we're pointing the facts of the last time that this was in front of us, that we are in a different asking. We're in a different part of the zoning code or zoning ordinances and we're being asked to do something different than what was here last time.
So yes, in answer to that, he, so in answer to that, um, back in 2021, zoning did deny the rooming house, um, use. He then came before us again for the three units and it was approved.
If I may, I have to take up too much time. It's one more comment. I'm so sorry. I'm working in this, there's such a stigma around recovery houses and there are to have recovery houses in New York. I'm not going to stand here and name them. But there are people who pack six and eight people per room or charge one hundred and seventy dollars a week, right? And I've been dealing with the city for the past four years, working with those inspectors, trying to deal with that type of recovery house. But there are reputable recovery houses in New York that have a maximum of one or two people per room. Hold those folks accountable, test them weekly and Mustafa is one of them. That's why I support him is to back up what you're saying. There are, that stigma is true in some recovery houses and yes, it's here in New York. There are agencies or people who will rent a home and call it a recovery house and put sensory people in until the city catches them. This gentleman is trying to do it the right way. He's coming before you asking to do it the right way. Do it within state standards and do it with this protected compliance. I was not taking up your time.
Are each apartment at separate building, separate heating, separate electric?
Yes, separate electric.
So we can technically go back to an apartment building if you ever sell it? And it won't carry over as a group home if you sell it?
So if he were successful in obtaining the group home there with his D DAP license that he has. I mean, you can ask to put a condition on it that it be turned back in to. So right now it is a three unit multifamily use is what it is, a multifamily use. You can put it, um, a condition on there, on the use if it's sold. However, now we are dealing in the CBD district, so I don't know.
Nancy, if we were to place a stipulation on it, would it go on the use variance?
I'm sorry, again, please.
If we stayed, if we placed a, a, a condition on this.
Yes, it would go under the use variance.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
To clarify, I'm not trying to be, I have nothing against this. I, like I said, I would put it in the house next door to me for all I care. Uh, I'm just trying to assuage my hesitancy towards the thing that I am specifically worried about. Uh, and like I, to Commissioner Velez's point, the community outcry at that last one was something that very uniquely informed my decision the last time and I a hundred percent agree. And if the people of that block didn't show up this time, then that should very heavily weigh on like, well, all right. If you don't have a problem with it, then there's no one that showed up or sent in letters, which they had an option. All of those have to, have to be taken into account. If you can answer, the zoning board did not approve for a rooming house. How did you get from the point of being approved for three single fa, is it three single family or three multifamily?
Three units.
Three units. How did we get from three units to you are currently already serving X amount of people as essentially a rooming house because you say you are already providing this service and these people? How did we get to that point after it had already been said by a recommending and a governing body of the city that you could not use it like that? And it, there may be a great answer and that's what I'm genuinely trying to find out here, that it has been used like that for the past four years.
Okay, so I was licensed in 2024. There's no ordinance for no occupancy, uh, within the, no requirements, uh, no zone requirements or occupancy requirements. You get your D DAP license, so.
So pretty much to get your D DAP license, there's a, there's a very long thorough procedure, a list of things that you need to show, correct? Like when I understand what you're saying, when you, when he came in front of the board the first time and there's people said in argument, I, I read it. I read through it all and I could understand why and I shared that information with him. I was like, you have like no structure, like there was no game plan, right? You just were like, I just want to do this. Um, and then he took the denial and he's like, all right, how can I make this better? Like, how can I fix this? How can I continue helping the community the way I've been doing or the way that I want to do, but do it legitimately? And he took every step that he needed to get registered, to get certified, to obtain, um, the D DAP license. He's been inspected twice so far, um, since then and has both passed both times. We were audited two months ago, passed that with flying colors. Um, are, we've had no issues with, um, D DAP, with charting, with our case management, what we offer our clients. And then if you have the documentation that shows here that there is, that we understand that there's no zoning requirement or occupancy requirement for a drug and alcohol recovery house, um, and that we're under the American Recidivities Act. That's what both documents say from D DAP, not from us, but from D DAP.
Okay, is my position representing the city here. So clarification, I'm going to clarify the difference between D DAP and the city licensing, okay? D DAP is a state, the state has, so we can take into consideration that when you're going for a group home. However, because he has a D DAP license, doesn't give him permission to have a group home at three, whatever, three seventy-three West Market Street. It gives him permission to come before us to ask for the, for the property to be legally licensed as a group home. And then if upon approval, then they will take it for, um, the inspection part of it to get it, um, you know, licensed as such, the number of. So that is why he also needs a variance in this case because it's only six to eight and he's asking for eighteen. Now, is he legal with D DAP with the state? Yes, because we already, you know, researched that. However, if he is not successful with the city, the state cannot overtrump the city's, um, ordinance. To say, you know, if, um, I mean, he can further, if zoning says to not approve it, then, um, you can further appeal that. However, you know, it is the city's ordinance not to run a group home unless you have, unless you went through the entire appeal process. Is, do you kind of understand what I'm, what I'm saying? So even though, yes, he does have a D DAP license, it doesn't trump what the city, what he has to get licensed and approved through the city for.
Yes, and I understand that we have to get licensed as a group home to continue running the facility because there's no clear, there's, you can't get on the city, York City website and look up how to open a recovery house in York City. There is no requirements, there's no, there's no information on how to do that. So I understand what you're saying on a state level, but the city can deny it, that's fine. But then does that mean that we're going to shut down every single recovery house in York City that's not licensed as a group home?
No, that's not what that means. We do not have a use for a recovery house. So no, they're not going to say, but you have to get approval, zoning approval for a group home with eighteen residents. And if, you know, and upon approval of that, if he obtains approval of that, then yes, the D DAP license and it has to be kept up to date. And he has to, you know, would have to let us know if anything changed, if the number of, of residents, you know, if they decreased it, anything. Anything that he was not compliant with as far as that is concerned. So in order for, for a, a individual such as Mr. Jamison to get approval for a group home here. First, he does need a D DAP license, so he does have that. But, but that doesn't give him the right to operate a group home without zoning approval in the city of York.
So the thing is, is the right to have a free dwelling, put the residence here on each floor, right? What's, uh, I'm already licensed for?
So you got approval for a three unit multifamily home. Now, um, the only, the dictation of how many residents or how many people can live in there. Now that has, comes under when they, um, license and inspect it as a tenant occupied. So I don't think that as far as when they expect it every other year as tenant occupied, that's not in our realm to do that. And our zoning determination is now state, if any of, if there any, if there's any codes, you know, or anything like that. You know, you may get zoning approval, but he's also going to have to make sure that under the building code, now you're putting eighteen people in there. Is the building, um, sprinklered?
We have, uh, we are licensed with the.
See, but I, I mean, I can't answer that, but.
We were told by the zoning that that's okay, that we do, we need.
You were told by, no, you weren't told by zoning because zoning does not dictate that.
We do have.
Building code official does.
We do have, uh, a monitor system that goes straight to, uh, any fire, the fire department, uh, that's there. I do have my license for that. Um, I'm paying for that. So I could, I definitely stay, stay on that.
I was just merely stating that that now is a paragraph in our zoning determination request that just because you obtained zoning approval, you should really check with the building code official first.
We spoke to someone that said that our, our monitor service.
Monitor system would be an excellent for that.
Well, just stating that, that it's not in this people's voice to decide that.
The three steps, so we still have to go in front of the, the, um, we still have to go in front of the zoning. We still have to talk with, um, get our, get our, um, like our, um, certification for what you're saying on coding, like from, for the code. So if we get all that, this is just step one. Because you're, it was the link that we know, yeah, that gave us all the steps.
Which is Michelle, but right now, um, like, yeah, I'm sorry, I went, obtained my license for D DAP. Which is the language, I guess, the language between the state and the city is upside down, which is not understandable. And which they saying within the state that you're doesn't have any sort of ordinance or occupational ordinance. So maybe on my end, I'll take responsibility if I did something wrong. And that's why I'm here to correct anything that I did wrong, to continue to run my business and continue to help individuals within the city. I'm not trying to overstep or do something illegal. I'm just trying to participate and help individuals that's suffering. And see, we need to, these individuals, they are laying outside. These are the individuals that I am bringing in and trying to help move them forward in their life. Um, I'm not trying to take advantage of anyone. I'm just trying to do business to help support them. I give my every day to individuals.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion on the variance to allow a group home?
So the first variance is for the, uh, number of occupants that they supersede.
And the second one would be for the actual use.
And is the code going to be the thirteen eleven dot one zero for the second one or is it going to be thirteen oh four? Your variance review sets two different things.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
So, and there's staff.
To allow it, this is the use.
Right, so in, there's conflicting information for the use is thirteen eleven. Number wise?
Oh my God.
Do we need it?
Yeah.
We do?
Well, they just, it states that.
The variance provisions for thirteen eleven, however, the use is the, the one at the, the one at the variance one that he wants to have eighteen to allow eighteen is thirteen oh four dot oh one dot one dot oh four dot zero zero one.
And that's for what again?
That's the actual, um, use.
So you have these reversed?
No. No, so B as a letter B, or for the first one, is just under the use. And that is to allow more than six to eight occupants to allow the eighteen. So on the.
Right, oh, so.
I'm sorry, what?
The second one is the same number, the six to eight occupants.
Correct, it's, it is the, it is the actual use, not with the letter B on there. So you can repeat the actual, just for the actual use. So if you, if you recommend approval for the eighteen occupants. Then, and then you recommend approval for the use, the use is for the eighteen occupants. That's why that variance is first.
So is there a motion for, to allow a group home with a maximum of eighteen occupants? Up to.
The first one is just to allow the eighteen occupants, not the use itself.
Up to eighteen. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to make, I'd make a motion to recommend approval of variance to allow up to eighteen occupants. As defined in section thirteen oh four dot oh one, one dot zero four dot zero zero one, be at the property at three seventy-three West Market Street.
One second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Velez.
Aye.
Burgos.
Aye.
David.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now a motion for the use variance.
I make a motion to recommend a, you want to? Are you okay if we add a stipulation at the end of this that upon sale, it reverts back to the three unit property? Matt, you want to kick that from here?
Sure. And we're using the 10 dot D or the same one as above?
This would be 1311, right?
That's to the variance. Now, the actual, to recommend approval. Wait a minute, where are we at here?
The use variance.
Correct. To 16, 18, up to 18 for the 1301, yes. Use variance.
So.
That is where you will make the conditions if you want the condition.
That's 1311, correct?
No. It's 1304 dot 01. Okay?
Deal with that later.
I have it right in the thing. It's just not right on the.
Not right on the things you give us. I recommend approval of a variance for a group home, six to eight occupants to, that says, yeah, six to eight occupants to allow up to 18 as defined in 1304 01 104001, without the B, right? For the property located at 373 West Market Street on the condition that the property revert back to three unit on transfer.
Any further discussion?
Who seconded that?
Maybe we have a roll call?
Johnson.
Aye.
Velez.
Aye.
Burgos.
Aye.
Aye.
More.
Motion carries. Thank you, folks. Nancy? Nancy? Do we have any update on the comprehensive plan?
We do not.
Do we have any other business?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, just I just want to make a statement. I keep going back to, are we tracking, like, are there any performance metrics behind tracking how the area of the neighborhood is changing for better or not, you know? Is there increased economic activity? Is there, are we growing tax base within York City as a result of allowing these different types of properties and the variance? Are we, is there, is that economic change tracked over time? That's just one thing I just, I just want to state. Like, are we, if there, if there are not these metrics in place, can we please put something in place just so we can begin to track how the neighborhood, how the population, how the economic growth or decline is, you know, forming over time? That's it.
I have partial answers for you then, so I can give you. And that's just, there are GIS systems in place. I don't know how granular it is. But I know the York County Planning Commission, I know, I've, I've seen Mike Pritchard generate, you know, maps before with, you know, that's based off of tax and parcel and all of that information. And that's just time series, so you would just compare it over time. And I know he was doing that in his position at the city when we were working on the comprehensive plan initially. So I know that we're tracking that somehow. I just don't know if we are pulling it together into ways that can answer the questions that you're specifically asking right now.
Got it. And also, is the city, because now we have, I know there's some general, I won't say opposition, but we have to be mindful of the type of area that we're creating with allowing different types of, let's say, group homes or different, different facilities that we are granting variances to. And let's say tonight, there was vape shops, you know, and blue pumps that have come up a couple of times. So are we, are we seeing an increase in the tax base? Are we seeing any economic benefit as a result of allowing these variances to continue to go through? That's just, that's something that I'm, that that's top of mind on every case that goes through.
Well, in the case of, of the remodeling property on West Market, you'll see a difference in the tax base. But in the last particular property, the taxes are based on the structure, not the use. So I don't think you would see, notice any change in taxes.
Okay, so tax-based economic benefit. So are we seeing employment in the, in the area increase or decrease? Are we seeing, let's say, we have, whether it be group homes or otherwise, everyone says, you know, we need safer, affordable housing, and we do. Are we seeing any, are we, in addition to attracting group homes, are we attracting other employers to the area that are potentially providing higher-paying jobs, skilled labor? Are we providing, are we attracting, example, I don't think we only want to attract people in need. We want to attract employers who have, who offer skilled labor. Are we attracting any of those type of employers to help build, not just the tax base, but the economic benefit, the economic base of?
Overall, in the county, I would say yes. However, it's kind, it's kind of hard when you are in a city that is, has limited space, very limited parking, as we hear every time we come up here. The structures can only really hold what they can hold. So I think that it would be hard, specifically in the central business district, to have that metric where we could narrow it down to skilled labor.
So, okay, so I'm just saying, are we, I don't want to, and this is just, you know, we, we will review the data as it comes in, but I think we should be mindful of further creating a dense population, a dense city population where with, it does not necessarily have skilled labor. We are, many of the applicants are coming before saying, hey, we're going to help applicants look for jobs. And we should, we all need jobs. But we want to build out, like, the, we want to improve the base. Because again, we're seeing, hey, we're going to help people look for jobs. At the same time, we are approving more vape shops. We are seeing these, these different types, type of entities pop up and they kind of go hand in hand. So the need for jobs and, let's say, cannabis, vape shops, these.
Now fairness, we've never approved a vape shop before because that doesn't exist.
In, in real terms, I'm just looking if we can walk within five blocks. You can see the type of storefronts that are, that are in, in the area. So I'm just, if we, we all want a more vibrant area. We all want a more walkable, safe, you know, at York City. I think we all can all agree on that. But I just want to be mindful of, at least at a minimum, be able to track what we're approving. Just so we can see that, hey, are we, is what we're approving isn't working? You know, because otherwise, are we just going to say yes to everybody's, you know, everybody's proposal? We need to have data behind the decisions that we say yes or that we approve or deny. Like, what, like, are we seeing the city change? Is there data behind that? If we do have map overlays, great. But I just think that we should be able to track what we're approving and denying. So we can, because again, I think we all want the city to grow and better, right?
I apologize at the time if this sounds overly academic. We definitely have various levels of that data. It definitely exists. We've seen it, we've used it, we've made decisions based off of it. Yeah, and it is, some of it is quite recent. We are talking and making microeconomic decisions, very micro, nano-economic decisions here. And we might have data, we definitely have data that will show us the trends in citywide, block-wide, in districts, in uses, things like that. We absolutely can track that. The problem that will happen, and it's just an unfortunate existence of it, is that we are going to then run into trying to come up with a statistical correlation between what we are seeing in a microenvironment to data that is for all intents and purposes, like blown out by macroeconomic forces, like interest rates over 10 years and taxes and subsidies and all of those things that are on YCEA level are going to blow out, like, why is this one thing moving into this one block? You're like, well, the property became available and it was the right price and there wasn't one next door. So that's really what it's about. But it's like, why are they coming to York? That, it probably wasn't some dude being like, I'm going to open a vape shop in York. They're probably like, hey, I live nearby, or I live, you know, within a couple of blocks, I'm going to open a vape shop. Or I already own five and I got to expand. Like, I would love to have that kind of correlation between what we are deciding and a measurable and quantifiable outcome and change on that needle, moving in the direction that we want to go per the comprehensive plan. I don't know if that's a thing we can ever realistically find. We can just, we're the vibe people. I know I say that before, but like, the zoning is like zoning, zoning, zoning. And we are like, this is where this city wants to be in 10, 20, 30 years. And it is kind of our job to keep those voices in mind and steer things in that direction. And we, I mean, right now, we're just like every other city, I imagine, struggling hard with the idea that we need more, not just affordable housing, we need more housing in a city and cities that are designed without the idea of a car in mind and then jammed packed full of cars, and then we have more housing problems on top of it. And you're like, cities aren't designed for cars. And ultimately, that's going to define so much about the decisions we make. Because if we had all the room in the world and we didn't have to worry about parking, imagine how many people would never show up and complain about something opening up next door. They'd be like, I don't care, I got my parking spot. Like, that's, I'd love to have that data. I just don't know if we'll ever have it. But we can certainly, you would certainly be able to at least ask someone in the YCEA or the county commission of like, is there, can we look at a general trend of like, is, is the tax base going up and then one of these stores shows up? Or does one of these stores show up and the tax base goes up? Like, that would tell you, do these services go into a block and then the tax base goes up? Or the taxable base goes up or the economic benefit of that block goes up? You would be able to ask those questions and through GIS, they would be able to answer them to some degree of trueness, but maybe not an absolute correlation between those two variables. It gets very, very nerdy very quickly.
It does.
And I apologize.
No, no, and I won't, I won't for it.
Just for your FYI, we are tracking via, not down to the point where you are, but we are tracking. I have, Monty does have in his possession some Excel worksheets that track the zoning determinations, track the, I mean, that we can put on there, that we're listing the zoning appeals, you know, what was.
Or a couple of years ago when we saw initially.
What was the outcome?
Solar panels coming through a lot and then the rooming housing ones. We're like, what percentage of our cases every year are these? And that, and so that all hearkens back to, if you're always given an exception, your ordinance is wrong. Like, it no longer matches reality. And so we were trying to track those kind of things.
So if you noticed, well, and if you noticed, remember before, we were just like, the staff reviews would be, will recommend approval. And then we went, wait a minute, hold on. If the ordinance states that you need a variance and it is not permitted, we as a city on the staff review have to recommend denial.
Yeah.
Unless, and that's what I was trying to explain to Mr. Jones. Correct.
If you are obligated to say deny, then there's no reason to even say it. It's the.
Correct. I mean, so, I mean, and with the special exception, we'll recommend if, if all the variances are approved. And then off, there are times where we'll recommend approval if, for the off-street parking, if they're landlocked. That is if, if a, an applicant actually shows hardship for some reason.
Not created by them.
Correct, correct, yes.
Is there anything else?